Excellent, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. It is Thursday, December. Good morning. It is Thursday, December 10th, and we're having a Gray County Council meeting. I want to welcome everybody. We'll start with the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have all members here except Counselor Boddy, and I will notify you when he arrives.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I know that we're supposed to move to... Oh, we'll start with the declaration of interest. Is there any declaration of interest from anyone? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Just a few housekeeping items, if I might. This is my first meeting in the new role, and I want to just talk about streamlining the meeting a little bit for good news and celebrations. You probably know that I'll be picking on that, right? What I'll be doing is, for good news and celebrations, I will not be going to every single person. I'll simply be asking if you have any good news or celebration to share, simply raise your hand or speak up, and I'll entertain that. But I won't go around the entire circle. I think we... Sometimes people feel a need to speak because they're being called upon. So if you have good news and celebrations, by all means, speak up. But otherwise, you don't have to feel like you need to speak. Second item, with respect to our meetings, I would remind Counsel that our meetings start at 9:30, and they are scheduled to run until 4:00. So I would just encourage everyone not to schedule anything on our County Council meeting days until after 4:00 p.m. In many instances, we're lucky, and we finish early. But I would just give a friendly reminder to all of us that we are scheduled to be available between 9:30 and 4:00 p.m. So if you could help us out by not scheduling items at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock... I know sometimes it can't be helped. You know, you've got that specialist appointment, and you absolutely have no choice. You must attend. Of course, we'll allow for that. But if you could just help us out in that regard, it would be very, very good. And thirdly, any feedback about the process would be appreciated, either to myself or perhaps to Kim. You know, if there are things that you feel, suggestions that you have that might improve the process, we're welcome those ideas. So please feel free to share. Any comments about any of those things? I don't see hands. I see Deputy Mayor McQueen adjusting his screen, but other than that, I don't see anyone else. Okay, then we'll move with... We'll continue, excuse me.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
I will just note that Counselor Boddy has joined us, so we have all members attending.
Excellent, thank you, and welcome to Counselor Boddy. We're on to item number four, Counselor Boddy. We're on adoption of the minutes, and those are the minutes of County Council dated November 26th and December 1st, and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated November 26th. That is moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Clumpus. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Or sorry, any opposed, I should say, any opposed? My apologies. I see no one opposed, so I'm gonna say that that is carried. Onwards we go to item number five, which is reports from the Board of Health. The Board of Health minutes dated October 23rd. That is moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Milm. Dr. Era is present, I believe. Dr. Era, would you like to...
Through you, Mr. Warden. So the highlights from the Board of Health meeting were three main items. One of them were examples of surveillance tools for COVID response in schools and childcare. And we have provided information to the board on the different tools that we use that help us be proactive, rather reactive, in the response. The second item was related to opiate crisis. So we are in December, and so far, we have zero deaths from COVID, and that's a great success. The opiate crisis has claimed over 13 individuals. The data usually comes early in 2021 to reflect the fatality in 2020. But anecdotally, we know that there has been more than 13. So we wanted to highlight it and keep it as a standing item on the agenda for the Board of Health. And the final item about public health modernization and the fact that the modernization or regionalization of public health was put on hold formally in March to the emergency. Nevertheless, we noticed that informal regionalization preceded by establishing communication channels between the center in the southwest Lynn and the different areas in Gray Bruce, and different organizations. And our board had issued a number of letters that will shed light and encourage... Raise awareness about the issue, and hopefully would encourage discussion that would lead to consultation, appropriate consultation, before implementing these initiatives related to regionalization. And so those are the main three points from the Board Minutes. Mr. Warden, open for questions about the minutes or about the COVID emergency response, if any.
Thank you, Dr. Era. And Counselor Patterson, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I would just like to share that Dr. Era provided us with a really excellent update on the schools with regards to the response process. And if you had a chance to click on the link and go into that presentation, you'll see that the health unit is very well-prepared for any situation that occurs. And this process they've developed is very effective, not only during the week, but especially on the weekend. And media are advised of a breaking story and are put on standby prior to any releases going out. And of course, Dr. Era is available for interviews. And there's always a follow-up with the media to see if the process was effective, and they were satisfied with it. And all key stakeholders are advised of what's happening. So it just shows you that the communication is so important, and with it comes a good level of trust, which in turn helps stop the spread of COVID-19. So thank you, Dr. Era, for having your team ready to go on whatever happens, weekdays or weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It truly would not happen without the full support of the board and the exceptional support during this year. Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel, are there any questions for Dr. Era on this report or anything to do with COVID? Seeing none, Dr. Era, thank you very much.
Mr. Warden, I see Counsel Desai.
Oh, okay, Counsel Desai, go right ahead.
Thank you. I had sent in a few questions through... There, there, there's a found email. So one of the questions I have around COVID is whether Gray Bruce Health Unit would be looking at moving into a more restrictive lockdown, given the increase in the number of cases of late. Speaking locally from Gray Highlands perspective, where as of last night, we were at 49 cases. There's at least two municipalities that are significantly above 50 cases. So will we be going into a more restrictive lockdown? And secondly, do we have any news of when our health unit will be receiving vaccines from the rollout that has been proposed? And yeah, so if... I know that we're receiving about 249 doses by the end of this month. And so will we be receiving any of those in Gray Bruce? Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Era.
So thank you for the really good questions. Both of them lend themselves to important subjects. Related to restrictions, we've seen increase in numbers over the past six weeks. However, for the past three weeks, we've seen change in attitude in the type of question we receive and in the concerned engagement from the public. And that really usually leads to change in behavior and change in numbers. And over the past 10 days, I would say, the numbers have not increased, rather decreased slightly. And if the public continues doing what they're doing, being engaged and concerned, I suspect we're gonna be in the green level in a week or two. Nevertheless, the numbers are not going up. So looking at the question, restrictive measures, usually they're reserved to situations where the least intrusive does not work, and the least intrusive is communication and has been working. So I don't anticipate any restrictive measures. Having said that, there could be restrictive measures related to certain sectors, depending what happens. Theoretically, if there's a business sector that is associated with high level of cases or outbreaks, that could be implemented quite quickly to ensure... Restrictions could be implemented quite quickly to ensure reduction in numbers in those settings. Nevertheless, in Gray Bruce, in any regulated setting, schools, businesses, restaurants, long-term care, retirement homes, currently, there are zero outbreaks. So this is as good as it gets. The majority of cases are related to private settings, friends and family, and we continue to have communication out based on the subject. And we have a town hall in collaboration with the two counties related to businesses today. We had recently a town hall related to just in general communication. And there is plenty of communication planned for the holiday season and to try to reduce the numbers there. So restrictions probably are not in the near future. The second part of the question is related to the vaccine. We have not had any direction from the ministry about starting vaccination in the immediate future in Gray Bruce. However, we have put together a proposal, and we are communicating to stakeholders. And as I mentioned before, if we put our hand up and say we are ready, and if there is a specific scenario where other parts of the province are not as ready, we might have the potential to utilize that competitive advantage and ensure immunization program starts in Gray Bruce as soon as January. We have collaboration with Chapman's Ice Cream and two freezers, ultracold freezers, will be in Gray Bruce within seven days. And that's probably one of the key elements that might delay the process in other places. The ministry, we're working with the ministry to get freezers and to proceed with the distribution system that they would have planned. And no question, that will be the optimal way universally across the province. However, if that process, provincial process, was delayed or was not as fast as what we can propose here, we might have a chance, if we advocate, all of us, to the province to start pilot here to be in that relatively positive position.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Counsel, whoever.
Go ahead, Counsel, however. Counsel, however, you're needed.
Sorry. Thank you, Dr. Era, for your comments and reiterating that, especially that this mission is happening in private settings here. I did, as you know, post that in my weekly video last week, which is now getting quite a bit of interest on social media because it's something people don't want to hear. They would rather have it be visitors and other settings rather than the parties that they're having. So, you know, it has generated quite a bit of discussion on social media, and I'm glad you reiterated that message today. We will get out that people should perhaps watch the beginning of County Council and get the real facts rather than the information from their social media feeds. The interesting thing that comes up, of course, though, and although it's not in Gray County, is the outbreak that people refer to, the outbreak at Loblawson, Collingwood. And I have been there, and certainly, their procedures weren't quite what we had, we have here at the Foodland and the Value Mine in Meaford. So there is a difference. And, you know, how do we deal with... I mean, we've had no outbreaks in regulated settings, but it appears that in our neighboring community, we do have that. So that is an issue. Perhaps you might say something, how we deal with that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We continue to discourage non-essential travel from high-risk area to low-risk area. I should have added that part. Nevertheless, if we go to basics, the unit of transmission is the individual. It's not the community. That is to say, every one of us can be in a high-risk area, still protect ourselves by following the three Ws. Similarly, if people are coming to our area or we're going to their area, as long as each one of us understands that basic principle, we would be in good standing. The system in general in our area is working very well, whether it's the health unit providing the recommendation to businesses and businesses going over and beyond. So as long as fatigue with this process is not there, we will still be able to be in the relatively good position we're in. And again, it's easy to think that restrictions are icing on the cake, so to speak. It's added benefit. It's a sort with two edges at all times. You know, livelihood that comes with regular business is important for health. And implementing restrictions when they're not warranted might have consequences way beyond what COVID can cause. So again, communication has been working, and it is impressive how the public can continue to respond favorably when the information is provided to them. So I do believe communication is key going forward, not restrictions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I don't see anyone else.
No, sir.
With that said, thank you, Dr. Era. And I will now call the question on receipt of the minutes of the Board of Health dated October 23rd. Is there anyone opposed to that? That then is carried. Item number six, we have two bylaws. Those bylaws are moved by Counselor Hutchinson and seconded by Counselor Clumpus. Is there any discussion on either of those bylaws?
Mr. Warden, because these are good news, I think Savannah has a map to share just to show council members the opportunities that are going to be available with this demonstration site.
Very good.
Can you see that?
Yes.
It's online? Excellent. Yes, absolutely. There's a lot of excitement in our department about this demonstration site. And we wanted to bring the map back just to show you. So to the right, the non-colorful area, that is actually Gray Roots. That's Morrison Heritage Village right beside it. So this is the property that neighbors Gray Roots. And just looking at what will be possible through the agriculture learning and demonstration, knowing how popular this has become through tourism. We've already been working on this through economic development with Philly. And now Jill with Gray Roots is just seeing so much potential to look at the history and tie everything together and actually start to see that training and that learning and demonstration. So very excited in our department about this bylaw and this site. And we haven't been as involved in it at this point. We know it's been very much planning and CAO, but we just wanted to extend our thank you for looking at this. And I will just leave this here while you're talking about the bylaw.
Whoops, thank you, Savannah. Is there questions from anyone else? I would just extend our thanks and gratitude once again to the halls for a very gracious or generous, I should say, donation, which is making this all possible. If there are no questions, then I will call the question on the motion. Is there anyone opposed? And I'm gonna say that that's carried. That transitions us quite nicely into good news and celebrations. Is there anyone with any good news announcements? Counselor Burley, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to tell all of County Council, the Georgian Bluffs are very excited. Monday morning, we have a brand-new CEO starting and a brand-new Director of Operations, both on the same day. So Merry Christmas to everybody in the area, and thank you.
That's absolutely right. Congratulations. Anyone else?
Counsel Boddy, Counsel Robinson, Counsel Keveney.
So I'll start with Counsel Keveney. I saw her hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. And I just wanted to share that Meaford Dragons have announced their winner. The show this year was by video this past week, and the grand winner is Purple Hollow Lavender and Flower Farm. It will be opening in 2021, and they're focused on building a spa-like agriculture with French and English lavenders and specialty flowers and sunflowers. So we look forward to exploring Purple Hollow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Keveney. Next, Counselor Boddy.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. This Friday, we're gonna be cutting the ribbon on the 10th Street Bridge. And probably the best news is this will be the last time that I'll be talking at this meeting about the 10th Street Bridge, other than making the name dedication in June. But we're pretty excited. We're actually a couple weeks ahead of schedule, so finally getting it open. Thanks.
That is fantastic news, for sure, for the people of On Sound and for people outside On Sound, quite frankly. Heather, I believe there was one other person.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name.
Thank you, and good morning to Mr. Warden and County Council. I just wanted to draw your attention by way of good news. On January 25th, at the Roma Conference, the one of the 2:00 p.m. concurrent sessions, I'll be chairing the What Now?, an open conversation on community safety and well-being plans. I draw your attention to that because this council has been very active in the community safety and well-being plans, and we've had delegations on that. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. I see Counsel Campbell.
Yes, just wanted to say that I know we mentioned it before, but on the 19th of December, we're having Christmas in the village in Chatsworth. Everything is safe distancing and masking, and we have a parade at 10:30 to 12:30. There's several events going on in the churches and whatnot. There's decorating classes, and there's food things. The firefighters and the Agriculture Society are putting this on.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Heather, I think you...
Yep, I have three more. Counselor Soever, Counsel McQueen, and Counsel Desai.
Thank you. We'll start with Counsel Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. We have a lot of good things happening here in the town of the Blue Mountains. First, though, I have to bring a lump of coal to the vandals who vandalized and stole ornaments from the erring around retirement residence and long-term care home on the night of December 6th to 7th. The good news about that is the community responded instantaneously with donations and cash, which were more than enough to replace the decorations and have money left over for other things. The volunteers are currently on-site installing the new donated decorations and ones that were purchased. We also have a lot of things going on. We have Christmas dinner, a drive-through Christmas dinner on Saturday, December 19th. We have three light tours, the Clarksburg Tour Lights, the Outdoor Festival Tour Lights, and the Holiday Magic Cap Blue. And of course, we have the Gift of Blue Shop Local event, five weekly prize packages valued at $250 and a grand prize package valued at $2,500. So if you shop local here, you can enter that contest, and you can win a prize. And with that, there's also holiday programs, many of them at the library, too many to read out here. But I urge people to go onto the library website. And these are all virtual programs. There's things like the Night Before Christmas, Bedtime Storytime, a holiday writing contest, and a winter solstice. And that's all I have, and Merry Christmas.
Does that qualify as a mask?
Yeah, it doesn't qualify as a mask unless I have one on underneath.
Well, thank you for the good news, Counsel Soever, and it's nice to see that the Christmas spirit is alive and well in the blue. Counsel or Deputy Warden, McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. A couple things I wish to share with everyone. We had a very successful drive-by Santa Claus parade in Markville a week or so ago. This would be two weeks this Saturday, and we had over 300 cars, very well organized, and it was over the period of two to three hours. And it was very, very well received. Also, the Building Department in Gray Highlands has issued the new building permit for the new hospital electronically. There was over 2,000 pages, and we do a lot of our permits now online. And so it has been issued, and just a matter of the province picking out who they're going to choose. I know recommendations have came from the Gray Bruce Health Services. So it's just a matter of the province sort of signing the bottom line and moving forward with the construction of that new hospital, which has been long-awaited for quite a long time. I think the first campaign went out in about 2002, 2003, and the community raised over $12, $13 million at that time. And so if you persevere, it eventually comes by. But it's interesting that you need almost 20 years of planning before you get a hospital, and it just takes time. But anyway, we're, you know, it's sweet to see and looking forward to that project starting soon. Like, and all the best to everybody for the holiday season, and have a safe holiday.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Next, Counselor Desai.
There we go. So I'll also start with a piece of unfortunate news. The Flesherton Connects, which were a long-serving service group in Flesherton, has ceased operations. One of the biggest reasons was the lack of volunteers. I'll move on from there to the Moonlight Madness in Markville, which happened the Friday before the Christmas parade. It was organized by the Chamber of Commerce, and it was basically a night of shopping local in Markville. The farmer's market had set up shop in downtown Markville as well. And it was just a lovely night in general. A lot of people out and about shopping in Markville. This past Friday, we had a similar event called Festive Friday in Flesherton, again, organized by the Chamber of Commerce. They've been really, really active through this pandemic and in supporting local businesses and the Chamber members. And I just want to give a shout-out to all the work that the Chamber of Commerce and Gray Highlands has done. I was part of a Movember fundraising campaign. If all of you remember, there was a bit of a thing on my upper lip. It wasn't a skunk, it was a mustache. At least what I'm sticking to was a mustache. That had to come off on December 1st. And the team that I was part of was a couple of my Rotorack friends. We raised a total of $800 to go towards the Movember Foundation. We were trying to get Counselor Woodbury in on our team, hoping we could get a number of donations, but not this year, maybe next year. And lastly, again, it's the season of celebrations. And to all those who are celebrating, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I believe Kwanzaa is in there as well. Be merry, be joyous, be safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Desai. And you know with the skunk comment that you opened yourself up to some criticism from Counselor Milm. So with that said, next is Counsel Milm.
I'm counting on the clerk stepping in at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And no, I'm not gonna take a poke at Mr. Counsel Desai. What I wanted to reassure the mayor of Georgian Bluffs that despite media reports to the contrary, Southgate is not proposing to build an international airport this year.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I don't see anyone else. That's my list.
Yes, I don't have anyone else either.
Excellent. Then, thank you, everyone. And our only item left for the council agenda is motion to adjourn. That's moved by Councilor Hutchinson and seconded by Councilor Carlton. Any discussion? I guess not. Anyone opposed? I see none. That's carried. Thank you very much. We're finished with our council. We'll move over.